All right, let's go ahead and call this work session to order. And the only topic is our fine arts study. I'm gonna take it to Chase or Matt. I don't know if you want to say.
And no, just thank you and thanks to everybody for staying around. It's been a long night and this is exciting and important work. So really appreciate you staying engaged. Um, Dwayne's with us, uh, the second of the seat. Tonight, uh, to do the, uh, the work session part, uh, of this, uh, topic, obviously the formal presentation from O P N. We did let Josh go, but Dwayne's been involved, um, in helping lead this work, uh, internally from our team. So, uh, what's turned over to Dwayne to, to, to start the interview presentation?
Good. I, I would also like to thank the people behind me. You know, I got to meet them all at once during construction and then got reacquainted with a lot of them during this process and it's been thoroughly enjoyable. I appreciate them hanging out with us. Uh, they're good. The last three weeks or last two weeks, we've met with all three groups. I think every instructor and every principal showed up and a lot of vice principals and we just had a lot of good conversation and if. I shared with them that I thought. The architects and engineers, including sound and who's aware of. That did the study, did a really good job of listening to them and listening to their concerns. Okay. But the challenge is. Putting it all together in an F M P plan and being able to finance it, which you're gonna hear more about. But it's, that's the real challenge, okay, in priorities because we also have other projects we want to do in the district. So we've got to kind of merge it all together. So I guess that's my, my challenge, which I really accept. It's fun. We'll do it. We'll get you something to look at. Okay. So, uh, I mean, with that, we could just get going. I don't need to re- reinforce everything that you heard. I will tell Kristen. I moved the black box from the right to the middle because I wanted the black box to be on the black box.
Okay, right.
All the other presentations, the black box is on the right. I moved it to the left. Sorry.
Okay.
Alright, so those are, we want to talk about the recommendations. I want to talk a little about black boxes and some of the things that we might be able to accomplish. Okay. So, and some of the improvement, again, you've heard a lot of this, the stage rigging, the lighting, technology. Dates for city highs and bad shape. HVAC acoustics, a lot of that needs to be done. Yes, there's a lighting project ready to go out the door when we pull the trigger. We keep moving. And then some of the, some of the. Did we skip one? Yeah. Okay, the long-term recommendations, uh, the second band room in city with taller ceilings, how do you accomplish that? It's a challenge. Uh, they need additional instrument stories and a lot of this, as you heard in the previous. Presentation is driven by the number of students, city high student count in these programs is way up. So that kind of pushes these facilities, you know, this fine arts facility was done in 2012 when I first got here. It was pretty, pretty cool back then. It's a little worn around the edges, but it still serves its purpose, but it doesn't have enough room. You know, and we were pretty limited at, at most of these schools, the exception was for how to expand these projects. Uh, the, the dressing rooms, makeup rooms, all that stuff that they use to support the theatrical productions at City High is pretty worn out. Okay, I mean, it's just there. It's been there a long time, needs a lot of help. Practice rooms, we've got some nice ones next to orchestra and band, but we need to create some more. Well, there's a lot of safety improvements and I did want to point out to you. The one of the things in the report talks about rigging inspections and you should know that we do that every year. And I even brought them with me, you know, same, but they're, we do an annual rigging, stage inspection report that looks at all the safety items. Do they all get done every year? No. Okay. Some of them be carried over, probably a lot of them do. But we've had staff come and go over the years. On our physical plant staff that's been pretty good at making a lot of those repairs. I just want to point that out. A lot of the lights need to be upgraded, the rehearsal space, the audio equipment, it gets worn out. I mean, technology changes about as fast as these power points. Yeah, that means come in here, something to do. So, uh. At, at Liberty High. They do not have a, they do not have a little theater, the drama teacher. Or drama coach, I don't know, is proper term with her title, but did express to me that he really would like a little theater and that, that would be his priority. There wasn't a consensus of the group, but it was his opinion that he needed something like that. So we need to come up with a solution that will help with that or at least give them a space to use. Uh, music choirs, they've been pushing into the, what we call. The old project lead the way classrooms, which were like steady art stuff when we built Liberty. There was two rooms dedicated for that. Uh, they, they moved into one of them and it's been repurposed. And there's a second one sitting there that I'm thinking could be moved somewhere else in the building. It could be used to help with the scene shop or some other backstage techies. Okay. Uh. And West High. The stage curtain is worn, the whole auditorium needs to be refurbished, including technology, acoustics, it all, it's, it's. It's old, not as old as me, but it's old. And it needs, it needs some help. Okay. And. One of the big things that you heard tonight from the architect is the, this area above the stage. When they built West High and all their infinite wisdom, they forgot to provide a law, fly loft above the stage. It would accommodate all the sets going up and down. So like Matt likes to say, you can do Peter Pan. You know? You can't do that at West High because there's not enough room to go up and down with all the stage equipment. It limits the, the ability for them to have theatrical performances. Uh, that they'd like to have. And their coach there. Uh, expressed to me that she really would be happy to see that. It really would help. And here's the thing that's in my mind is build and I'll get to them a little bit later. If you're gonna fix the fly off. You gotta do it first. You can't upgrade everything in the auditorium and take the fly off, rip, rip the ceiling off or the roof off and raise it up. And create an absolute mess. So we'll come back to them. Long-term recommendations at West High is reconstruct the, the rigging, the fly off, which I just alluded to. The orchestra pit needs repair, the acoustics, everything is just worn out. I get it. Okay, but we can look at this as. In the report, even they talk about individual projects, but in my mind. For the best bang for the district's investment is to do this as a consolidated project. And do these as a whole. So we're not going to just go into West High and fix the lights and not touch the acoustics. Or the, or the light, or the technology and the sound system. You have to do it as a whole package. So I, again, I'll come back to that. So there's some ADA issues there. Again, it was, those issues, uh. Were okay when they built the school that could be improved today. Okay. ADA changes rapid, has over the last twenties. The black, so I want to talk a little bit about black box and I, I quoted this Derek Floyd. He did a study. It's a really short, two-page study, but it's really concise and really to the point. And if you need to Google him and look him up, the National Federation of High Schools referred to him. He did a study of a black box in a high school in Oklahoma. And he pointed out some of the advantages and disadvantages of a black box. And I'll be honest with you, when I first read this report and Lisa and Jane, I read it four times.
Wouldn't get us.
And I recommended the glossary, but it was, you know, it was pretty, well, it's pretty technical. Okay, but. They taught, we talked to the architects through the process about a black box. The, the instructors behind me all know the black boxes. They all know how they can use it. And I, I wasn't convinced in the beginning. But the more I read the report and the more I understood what the needs were and how they needed additional spaces. I started leaving that. I even surprised Matt one day and said, Matt, we really need to look at black box as a solution to a lot of the problems that we have at these three buildings. Okay. So having done that, I researched black boxes, came across this guy. He has a pretty good description. It's an amenable space that can be molded and shifted and moved to suit the user. It's a big, open, this is like a black box. You could see it as a, except that it would be very useful, the ceiling grid, the structure above could be used to hang lights and speakers and move around. You can set up risers, you can take them down, you can have a little theater in the round. You can do anything you want inside that black box. That's the purpose of that is that it's very, very flexible. Okay. So some of the advantages I just pointed out, it's a smaller, more intimate venue that can be used for productions. It creates the opportunity for better use of facility and it has. And an amazing flexible layout key pillows. I started looking at them all over the country and believe me, there's a lot of ways to deal with that. And. The community members can also use it, as this guy's pointing out. So it really. Creates a lot of possibilities, can maybe solve a lot of ills. The disadvantages of a black box. Is that when it gets started using it, everybody and their brother's gonna want to use it. Because it's flexible, they might be able to have, you know, music choir could set up risers and do an ensemble thing or orchestra could have a small group in there or. A pep band or whatever, you know, different groups can use this in different ways. And then it will expand beyond fine arts. I'm sure that other people in the building will want to use it. For meetings. I've heard a lot of people have small group meetings or community meetings and these things that can be used for everything. And. Everyone will want to use the space. The last line was, problem with a black box is when the audience is there and you're in the round. They see everything. So I mean, it's a theater in the round is not, it's intimate, but yet not very private. So. I had pictures in this slide presentation of black boxes from Texas, Oklahoma, Minnesota, Maryland to California. And I said, you know, there's gotta be some of these in Iowa. So I found four examples in Iowa, I noted more, but here's four examples. The first one was Lewis Central in Council Bluffs. I don't, don't too fast. Here's why I need to point stuff out and use my thousand words to describe the picture.
Want to go back or you want this one?
I mean, choose to do that. So anyway, the first one was, was Lewis Central. The middle one is, is a unit distance, which is no law was closed, but that one's got seats set up. The one before it, key back in. That was just a group singing, you know, and there could be chairs, it could be whatever, but that's how they were using it in Council Bluffs when they took the picture. Uh, this was a little more formal, it's got some risers in it. The one in Omaha, there's a memorial unit, there's one right here in town. It's not black, but it's conservative black. And it's used for a lot of things. Tables for meetings, small group meetings. Risers, bleachers, whatever you want to do, you can do in these rooms. It's a very functional room. And the last one I put in there was Spirit Lake. And the Vidal Center, they have a lot of money to spend in Spirit Lake at there. But they really do. But, and this is another application where you can put black curtains up. And create a more intimate atmosphere for theater in the round, whatever. There's just a ton of ways to do this with black box. We want to talk a little bit about this.
Yeah, so since everybody else is thank the people behind me, I also want to thank you all. Uh, we had some great discussions over the course of the last week. My main job was to think, I was Dwayne's handler during these meetings to make sure he stayed unscraped. And I failed. Not surprised. Um, but the conversations overall were extremely, uh, beneficial, extremely appreciative and grateful. Uh, that we're looking into the study and that we're, you know, we're looking to, uh, address a need within our community. Again, as I talked to them about our conversations at the board meetings. Things that bring students back to our district are activities outside of school, fine arts and athletics. And I think that's what we're looking to address here. Over our F M P two point two. So again, I'm not gonna reiterate kind of what we had talked about as far as the feedback that we heard from the groups, as you've seen from there and the conversation that Dwayne has talked about. Again, extremely appreciated. Thanks for the feedback from the very beginning and the get-go. And as we continue the conversations, we, as we told, uh, each of the buildings, this is not the final end here. Uh, they're gonna continue to be involved in the process as we, uh, refine the, uh, plans in each building.
So to get the discussion started at each building, I kind of threw a radical idea at all through them. Okay, just to get the conversation going. As to how a black box could solve some of their issues. Okay. And I want you to look at this and I gotta, I don't, I don't know if, is it gonna work? Now. You see where it says floor line there? This is the fine arts, current fine arts. And the side of the addition or the stage with City High, okay? And that floor line right there. That imitation limestone is actually concrete. But. That's the floor of the orchestra room on the second floor and it, in, in effect, the higher ones are the ceiling for the band room on the lower floor. That's the current entrance off that staff lot. If you follow that limestone, we'll call it that now, on around horizontally. Towards, towards the stage door. That stage door is on the floor, the level of the stage. Okay. So, in effect, this building, the orchestra. And music choir rooms are on the very same levels to stage. But they're really, you, you can move between them, but the, the access between the two is pretty. At times arduous, limited, okay, steps, rant, whatever. So in one of my nightmares, I woke up one night and said, hey. What if we create a two-story black box? So follow, just stay with me. Not cheap, but a two-story black box. And that current entrance that comes out of the band room, that band room's already below grade. Okay, as you work your way around the building, there's dirt piled up next to it, okay. And the banks come down right there, but if you created a two-story box. Where the second floor box started at the floor line and went up and went as high as you need it. A lot of these are sixteen, twenty feet tall. Okay. You can have a black box, you can have some rehearsal rooms, you can have some stories, but one of the concerns that was addressed by Josh tonight was the wing space. I hope they're nodding their heads back. The wing space off that stage. You can increase with that black, that second floor black box, okay? The lower level, the concern was, well, we still need a higher ceiling. So the solution there is to ramp, ramp down a couple of feet. So actually. Lower this level of the floor for the first floor. Keep the ceiling height the same and you get a taller ceiling in the band room and then above it. You have the black box for theatrical orchestra, music, stage, whatever. Okay. The real challenge here is not the two-story black box. You look at that and there's a boiler room underneath that's. That scene shop, which is to the, if you see the vertical columns like where the, the cupola is. Those, that's the basically the front to the rear of the stage and behind that's the scene shop. Below that's the boiler room. There's gas, there's electric, there's telecommunications, there's everything that we use to run our districts and our building going into that spot. So we gotta figure out a way, right, if somebody's been in here to fix that. Okay. But that's the challenge, but if we can overcome that challenge. We will not approach on the teacher parking lot. There's enough space between the building. There's some eighty-seven feet plus out to the parking lot. We don't need to touch it. Okay, first concern a lot of people had. And the width, we can add sixty, maybe eighty. We can talk four to five, six thousand square feet on one floor. It would be a great, great facility if we can pull it off. Question is, I know you're gonna ask. What's it gonna cost? I don't know yet. I'm working. Okay. So that's a solution, a radical solution at City High. But my, it's one. Okay, I'm not saying it's the only one. And here, here you can see the floor plan. The, the lower level is in red. Of course, the new entrance. Would be the, the red box is the, is the black box being there now. So the red's the lower level and we create a new entrance into the building. Uh, and the band room would be right down the hall, down right into the third room. I, I think it would be very useful and it could be used for a lot of things besides the band. So then, and the next drawing, you know, keep scrolling, thank you. The green's the second floor of that black box. And that lines up with, and if you can see it to the right, the right-hand side of that black box lines up with the stage itself. So that's where you increase your wing space in your stage. Okay. And you could push the stage back into the scene shop. Maybe there's a structural wall there, not easy. We put a big hole in that wall, once or eight, it'd be two. You know? It's, it's, it's a load-bearing wall, but we did put a door in there last time we went through here. And we could push some of the scene shop stuff maybe out into the new black box. There's an area there that could be for rehearsal rooms, could be. You know, the, the dress, uh, makeup rooms, those kind of things that you need for dramatic. For the drama team. So that would work in that location. You go anywhere else on the site and you're in an alleyway behind the building there, behind fine arts. There's, uh, there's an access to the shop, you know, there's all kinds of things that get in the way, but it's somewhere else and still being close. To the auditorium and still being close to band music and orchestra. So that seemed to me to be a good place. You're looking.
So is the two-story black box have like floors so that there's two different sections to it? It's not a big?
No, two floors, I'm sorry. Lower level floor, ceiling, which acts as a floor for the upper level.
And so it would be two different spaces?
Yes.
For that would be black box?
Yes. And then the upper level, you could make the ceiling as high as you wanted to, accommodate all the stuff you want to do. The lower level, we've given additional heights for the band and the volume.
Band.
Excuse me?
The, the lower level band room.
Right.
Um, and so then what would happen, um, to the existing band room? What would you?
Let's do it.
Just, just, so that would just be one large band, band room and then?
Right. It is, it technically one larger room with a, with a divide, the divider that's a real pain to open and close. That, it takes them a while to do that until, up to the thirty minutes to close them. It shouldn't be that hard. But in the, in the beginning, you guys all remember Meyer. Was the band director there and that's, that's basically what he wanted. We did, you know, we did what he asked, but anyway, that, that, uh. Right, the band rooms would stay. Yeah. Any questions on that? Did I make that clear? Okay. So we're gonna go to Liberty High next and this was even more radical than the one I just gave you. And I'm not saying it's the solution. But if you think about Liberty High and if you've been out there, that school is surrounded by parking lot, two parking lots and two service roads. And it's a fire lane, fire trucks have to get back there. We can't, we can't close it off. They have controlled access. And it really is a tight spot. And if it, right there where it says. Project Leadway Classrooms, there's a driveway there that goes down into the, towards the building. And that was originally intended for buses to drop off special ed students or special lead students. That couldn't travel through the entire building to get to their rooms. That's why that was built that way. Okay. And it was very purposeful. And also to the left of that where it says like twenty-seven, that's special ed where it says twenty-five, twenty-six. Those are door numbers. That's where the shop is. Okay. The shop at Liberty High is not overly sized. If anything, it was undersized. A lot of reasons, but it wasn't built as big as it should be. But that driveway that goes around the right side of the building, across the top, drops down into there and goes all the way back up and goes around where you see that green hatch. All the way around the commons area out to the athletics. Okay. On the other side of that driveway is a ravine and it's a ravine. Okay. There's one flat area out there that kind of in my mind said, you know, if you ever add on to Liberty. There's a place for a classroom addition out there. If you ever go from fifteen to two. It would require a skywalk on the second floor to tie it together. Which is another harebrained idea. It might be the only one that worked. It, it'd come right into Brady's classroom. So anyway, here's what I, here's a hair, and again, this was to stimulate discussion to get people thinking like, what can we do with a rarely limited site? So if you look at that. Upper rectangle, it's green hats. That's currently where the art room is. Okay. And so I was fortunate Jenny Ray's wife was not in the meeting where I brought this idea up. Cause Jenny helped us plan that room and it was really, really her baby. Okay, and she did a really nice job with it. But I'm thinking, where do you want to put a black box when you have no site to work with at Liberty? Maybe you move the art room, rebuild somewhere else and you raise the roof. Because it's about twelve feet right now and needs to go up, you know, in there eight, ten feet. You raise the roof, extend the block walls up and you create a black box in that location and you have. You're, you're giving up the money you spent to build that facility, but that's been what, yeah, just in seven, eight years already. It's been what years? Okay. So. Maybe that's a place, maybe it's not, but I, I wanted to get the discussion going. And then, right there where it says project lead the way classrooms, there's two classrooms there. And I've already told you, music's taken over one of them. And they need to take over the second one. Surely this, with the new addition we did, we might be able to find a room to move that somewhere else. So we could repurpose that. It's right next to the scene shop. It's right next to that, what was a great corridor at Liberty High, Liberty High around that whole fine arts. Wing. That ties everything together. That, that really is a really convenient spot. So if I had to start over from day one, I'd say that's where it needs to go. Maybe it makes sense to do it from day two. Again, it's a cost thing. I understand that. And you have to build the art room first. So where are you gonna put the art room? Well, the red box up there would be a new art room in courtyard. And you could tie it, you could tie it. You could also create a corridor that would tie. The far end of the building with the middle part of the building, the whole academic wing. You know, right now you gotta walk loops, right? And maybe they need to put a corridor that cuts that in half and get students to class on time. Okay, would have been an issue for me. But. That would be a good location. There could be a new and improved art room and if I was a brave man, I'd ask Jenny to help us redesign it. So anyway, that was the thought we could do at Liberty High. Again, stimulate.
So. One of the things that I think is the beauty of Liberty is when you walk in the concourse, it's the gym and the theater. And from what I recall, the black box is gonna be buried and, and, and they have locking doors so that the public can't get that into the instruction space. But, but that would have to change, right? I mean, there's, or, or is there a way to build a direct path to that black box?
There is a direct path or wide corridors. You just have to leave the doors open.
Okay.
Yeah, but there are.
But that, we would use.
Oh yeah, there's a great, there's a great, the hallway going back around here is really wide. It's like ten to twelve foot, I want to say. Am I saying that right? It's pretty wide. So, I mean, it's, it was set up so people, the students could move around that whole area in a rapid order. So yeah, access to the black box wouldn't, wouldn't bother me. The other thing is it's right next to the driveway. So if you wanted to bring stuff in from the outside, if you want to move in risers or whatever, you could do that. Okay. I think it would be very conveniently located. It would serve the building well. Okay, West High. Any more questions on Liberty? No, West High's not crazy. Here, here's the crazy part. You gotta raise that, the purple. You gotta raise that law. You heard me say it a little while ago. You take the, the, that building had a very limited rough build. I'm sure it was done for economic reasons. It's the only explanation I can get when that. Was built. It, it's, and even the architects who designed that space has said to me, they've regretted it ever since. It really, it really makes them, the folks at West High, it maybe makes it hard to do a really first-class production. And by the way. Christian. Who's another great guy back there who helped design our art room with us. Pointed out to me that the architect transposed the numbers. The seating is eight oh five, it's not eight fifty. He transposes the five in his room. So I get that right, Christian?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so. To make this right. You gotta raise that up. It, it doesn't make any sense to spend any money. On acoustics or rece, upholstery, any of that, carpet, anything to do with that auditorium until you build that law. Because I can guarantee it, it's gonna be dirty and it's gonna be noisy. And when, because we're gonna start tearing structure off the building to raise it up. But that's what needs to be done at, at West High. Okay. You do that first. Then you have two possible locations. I threw at them for a black box. The one is the lower left-hand corner. There is the green one. Okay. It's very close to the entrance, the current entrance to the auditorium. One of the deficiencies in the, in the report was. They want to expand that outer lobby of the auditorium. It's too narrow. And if you look right, right, you see through Matt's head right there, it's pretty narrow there. Okay. So. That green box could be extended along down in front of the auditorium and we could expand the lobby area by the auditorium itself. By, is in conjunction with building the black box. The black box works for me there because. It's pretty close to the, you know, it's, it's close to the band rooms. I get that. But it's in a place where they could use that for a lot of different things and it's close to the auditorium. The second location that you see on there in the upper right-hand corner is that orange box would be attached to the little field. So could there be a black box next to a little theater? Would it be more practical there? It's very doable. There's a courtyard out there and there's a bank there. But it's doable. I mean, it's buildable. Okay. I think the discussions we need to have with this team behind us is really where's the best place for the school to put this black box. I think the black boxes need to be built first. And then you raise the loft, and then you do the auditorium, and the reason is, they have a place to function. If you take that loft off first, they have no use of the auditorium, they have nowhere else to go. Build a black box first, it solves the problem, okay? So all three schools, black boxes solve different problems in all three buildings, but they all have different issues, okay? So that, in my mind, was a discussion starter for West High School.
Dwayne, do you wanna talk, like, the conversation we had with West High was the use of that auditorium in the midst of that construction? As far as the use or non-use of it?
Non-use, that will be very limited. You know, we could start in the spring, take that off for the summer. We could have it, maybe the stage closed off, front of it, and you could use maybe the auditorium, but using the stage is not gonna be doable for you. Cause there's all kinds of steel going up there, all the rigging's gonna be new, all the curtains are gonna be new. It's all gonna be totally redone when we do that. So, I, I, they're gonna lose some function of that, and that was the other reason for creating a black box. So they could have theater in the round, or have some small production space while this is going on.
I wouldn't think that's important for West High, that's different, that's a little unique compared to the other two, as, as they start playing their shows out. Couple years ahead of time, they need to know that, and planning for the show, given the setting, the scenery, the type of format. Uh, that it's involved in, there's discussion, do we do an outdoor show during some of the, uh, the fall or spring plays? So, again, those discussions, decisions we make have an impact.
Big impact. I mean, if all, all the stars line up. And we can give you a financing package that you can live with, and an FMP timeline that you can live with. We could possibly start the design work of this yet, this summer, late summer, early fall, and start the project next summer. I mean, we could. But, which means, they're gonna lose the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, or they're gonna lose twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But we'll know in advance where we're at with the schedule, and how that'll affect it, cause you just heard me say, we gotta build a black box too.
Well, that was my question, is how long would it take, would, would, would it take a year to do the black box, and then a year to do the fly loft and other thing?
Maybe not a year on the fly loft, but the black box, I'd give it a year.
So may, maybe, black box twenty-six, twenty-seven, then shut down the auditorium.
That's what makes sense, it really does. And when I start putting a pencil to the timeline, I'm sure I'll come to that same conclusion.
And do you mean, can you comment on the little theaters at City and West, so are, are you thinking if they have a black box? The little theater is maybe not as important, or are you thinking of, of, of doing both?
I think, I think the little theater. At Liberty, that's what you're asking about.
No, I, well, there's no little, there is, the little theater at West that we're studying. There is.
I'm sorry, I was thinking something else.
At Liberty, right?
No.
So, um, do you, uh, are, is it your vision that if you do the black box theaters? That refurbishing the little theaters is kind of a, not as, as important, or are you thinking that you, that you would do both of those spaces?
I think the little theater at West High is definitely one. And you could definitely use some acoustics and some technology work, maybe some upholstery, I don't know. But, but what I like about waiting is do the black box. So you have a place to function, and then you go down there and do the little theater, it doesn't really bother as many people.
So you, you're thinking both spaces, but sorry, you're.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would make suggestions to retire the other spaces, I think we might need those.
And the, the little theater, and I think John still hearing me talk about it, but the, ready now.
Yes.
Is he? He's only asked me for one more thing. It's an inside joke. So, the, uh. With little theater at City is underutilized, okay? But it could be brought back to life, and should be. Yeah, it should be brought back to life.
I'm genuinely curious. When I look at the study and everything, the architect and the feedback from originally, I, the only part that I see. A black box theater listed as turning the little theater, it's city high, the black box is an idea. And it's kind of briefly mentioned, uh, Liberty wants a second theater sometime, right? So why, why propose additional black box theaters at City and West when?
Neither school has. It's a perfect question, it really is, because a little theater can be used as a little theater. A black box can be used for so many other things, it adds a lot of flexibility at the schools. So in theory, all three schools need a little theater, and all three schools could use a black box. To do the things that they can't do in the little theater, you know, they have a lot of programming that they could do in those rooms. In addition to the community use for those rooms. I, I, I had the same opinion, okay, but as I researched and got into it, I thought, no, they didn't vote. They do a little theater and they need a black box, so they can function, they can do so many things with our students. In those loft boxes that they can't do in the little theater, there's a lot of flexibility.
What kind of feedback did you get from the meetings afterwards on the black box, I guess?
Uh, I don't think there was anybody that really objected to it, except for the drama teacher at West High, who's, or excuse me, at Liberty. Whose first priority was a little theater, not a black box, and I told him I would mention that in the meeting. So, it, that's how his program's set up, but I think in the end, if they had that, both of those spaces. Our fine arts program would be second to none in the state, they really wouldn't be top notch. With the people you got back here, give them the right facilities, it'd be great.
There it is.
Yeah, I'd be better.
Thank you.
At the beginning of the presentation, of the long term and the short term recommendation for all the schools. Is, is the black box concept, and you know, like, looking at long-term recommendations at City High, right? The dressing and makeup room, is, is it the black box, or is it going to be also some of the other long-term recommendations plus the black box?
I'm reluctant to go in there and start remodeling those small spaces that they have. I don't think it's money that's spent. I'm reluctant to do. Auditorium upgrades with, unless you're doing all the things that you need to make it better, so. I'm not answering your question maybe directly, but I think. That's the challenge, is to lay out a timeline where we can make the improvements to, like the black boxes. Though, the programs function while we take them in our auditorium. Especially at West, and even at City High, that black box will expand the, the, the stage, the side of the stage. You know, for, for them to operate in. I was there, that's today. So, I mean, it's, they need that space, it's just really crunched, I get it, and this is one way to do it, so you have to do it. In a way that makes it, keeps, it allows them to function, you know, which has been the facility master plan from day one, you have to lay things out so. You don't impact the function of a district, where the students, where the classrooms are in.
The one with the launch. For the long term, are you imagining that coming out of a future capital extension, like how far along in term are we thinking, and still this?
Yeah, we'd be presenting these projects as part of that FMP next month, right? That we, we would take the existing funds from the current FMP. As Dwayne works through the pricing on this, incorporate those projects in, right? I mean, I think that's, that's the goal here, is that we bring you a package that is really primarily athletics and fine arts. When you look at what the bulk of that'll be, those will be the two big things, I think those are, somebody mentioned it here earlier, maybe Lucas was hitting on that, as far as. You know, two big things for the district when we look at this area, being competitive and trying to make sure we're keeping our, our students and families with us. And I think those are two really strong avenues for us to look at, but it's a long answered question, I'd say it'd be there.
I, it's, yeah, that's kind of where I'm getting at, and I guess my, my main concern, uh. For City, I guess it, it comes in two forms, like, first of all, I, what I've heard from the community is that. I get, the best analogy that I can come to Oakstead is that it is, this is granted, I don't know how the stage can get larger. And I'm, I'm not familiar with that, and I'm gonna take your word for it, but the way it currently is, I'm like. Uh, your granddad's sports car that your dad helped re, remodel, right? It's older, it's beautiful, it performs fantastic, it's great, but it's not really practical for. Modern productions and the modern group, and the. What I wanna know is, and I, and I also come from a, my background is a school district where. They built a new auditorium when I was there, and now they're building a new auditorium twenty-five years later. You can figure out which one that is, if you know my background, and like, I. Can we make do with Oakstead as it is, and make it bigger, and make it big enough for? The people in the arts, or do we need to protect space? On the City High property, because City High property, there, there's about one house over there left, and if you.
Can you go back to that one?
If you, and if you expand south, you're gonna have to ship that parking lot, that parking lot goes to my house, so I, I'm not really keen on that. But the, uh. Again, that, that's kind of my question of if, if there was a time in the future. Where there needed to be a buildout of a auditorium of Southern High.
Okay, a little history. Back in the late nineties, we did add on to that stage, there was a fire alarm, it was brought out towards the auditorium. In the orchestra pit, my understanding was it was reworked, okay? Not the best orchestra pit in the world. But it was redone, okay, good or bad. That solution there, I don't think anybody wants to give up any of the seating to burn the stage outward, but. And you can't make it any wider because of the structure that's there, it's all bearing walls. You know, that whole auditorium, in theory, you could take it down and start over, I don't think I'd wanna live on the east side if they recommended that. Okay? And you do it, and you say.
Boldos on my answer.
Yeah, so anyway, you know, that, the, the solution there we talked about was to make more side space on the stage. On one side of that stage, and there's an arrow that points up to it on the left hand, it's like, there's an A after the word, but it points to the stage. To the right of that, or above that is a corridor. It goes from front to back alongside of that auditorium, on the outside of the auditorium, but it's a corridor that students use. On the left side of that stage, would be stage right, but on what left on that drawing, is where you could build space. To expand the stage sideways and create more side space, that's one way to do it. The second way to do it is directly behind that stage, and it's hard to see, but there's a room that's about a square box behind it. That's the scene shot, okay? It, that's a room that we created during the last remodel, and we put a big overhead door, yeah, there you go. At scene shot, and they also, there's big doors there from the stage back into that space, one big door anyway. That stage up, in theory, could also push out into the black box, okay? And we could create some extra room there to operate, they don't have enough room for all their equipment, all their stage equipment. And then the front part of that black box, we, we could widen the stage in terms of. How useful it is for the equipment that they move around, props, that kind of thing. I don't see any way, any real way to make the actual stage percentage any wider than it is structurally. And I, I'm not a structural engineer, but I've built enough buildings, I can tell you, that, that whole thing had to come down if you're gonna do it. But it's not. And if that's the right solution, hey. We'll do it, but I wanna make sure the east side's cool with it.
And I tried to rethink part of what I think your question was.
Yeah.
So, in the future, is there anything we're doing today that would? Hurt our ability that at some time in the future, a future board, future admin team wanted to.
I'm sorry.
Construct an auditorium, you know, what are we doing to the footprint there that would create any challenges or?
Oh, the footprint would prevent you, the black box would prevent you from making the stage any wider. You could still make the auditorium longer, and repurpose the black box, so yeah, you could do it structurally. But it's a major, major task to change that auditorium. It really is. I. You gotta imagine, it's a big tall box, and all four walls are, are load burning some type, and to widen it.
It's just not.
It's not practical.
No, I.
Unless, unless, unless the community really said, hey, make it bigger, let's see two thousand.
I, I don't think I heard that from the community, from the community, it's more. They're, they're like, I wanna keep my granddad's sports car the same, I don't wanna change it, I just want it so I can use it.
Yeah.
For prom, you know, that kind of thing, but, but we want something bigger to have. Be able to have large-scale concerts for ensemble and band and whatever.
I think by widening the stage and increasing the depth of the workspace behind the stage. You're gonna really help City High, you'd be able to produce better plays, and that's, that's. Is it gonna limit future wealth? I don't know, the black box can always be really manipulated and changed, but I think it will really give them what they need. It's better than what they have. Not a good thing to say, but it.
And then, and when it comes to the seating, there any way to add more seating? I know that that kind of hits way very valuable lobby space, but, um, I don't know, if you try, so that.
So, that was proposed to us by the architect, to bump out into the, the, the balcony out into the lobby behind. And to bump out into the lobby behind this here, the lower level. And, and also to change the configuration of the aisles, they put them one aisle down the middle, instead of two aisles down the sides. You might be able to get a few extra seats. My first reaction to it is, it's a pretty pricey investment for what little gain you're gonna get. You're gonna get fifty seats and spend a million doing it? I don't know if it's worth it, to be honest with you. I think we need to think about it, we need to work it through the site team with the architects when we get them on board. Certainly look at it, but I'm thinking right now, it's a pretty pricey investment for the game, that makes sense?
I'm sorry that I'm being so dense, but when you're talking about widening the stage at City. Do you mean we're, the only way it can go is to blow back into that fifteen oh one A room? And then it gives them more depth?
Workspace, yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's just going back.
Now making the stage, the width of the front of the stage will not change with any of these, it would only give them workspace to the side and workspace to the rear.
And then, did you say you can blow the block, black box, like, down, you know, like a southeast direction? And then get more stage room out towards the parking lot, if we wanted to do that?
That, that, the part that goes up the left-hand side, you know, that is next to the parking lot, right, it's right around now. Okay?
Yeah.
And that, but there's a, the upper right-hand corner of that right box is where that stage door was in that picture I showed you.
Yeah.
Okay? And so that would tie back in to the corridor that exists on the second floor of the fine arts, as it is today, which is the upper left. Those, that's the orchestra and music room, and there's a corridor there, that would tie and wrap around into that second floor. On the lower level, there'd be a corridor into a ramp that goes down to the base, the lower level for the band room. Am I making, am I making any sense? It's not easy.
But did you say that? Like, the diagonal line that's heading.
Floor line.
The floor line.
Yeah.
Could, we could pull that down.
Yeah, well, sure, a little bit.
And get more room on the stage?
Yeah.
If we wanted to.
Yeah.
And then the side.
I was limited by the parking lot for the teachers.
Well, I'll tell you for every spot you take, where you have fun.
I already had a plan.
So the, so it's kind of, I mean, just based on how you described it, Dwayne, now I wonder if I'm losing confidence on it. But the front of, like, the performance stage won't change, but the work areas on the side is what it's.
And the right.
That's what we're talking about, yeah, so when you're talking about blowing out the side of the building here, that's basically the work area that's gonna get extended out there.
Exactly. I, I would never propose changing that for Sunday March, and I mean, it's too nice, it's too well done.
Yeah, did you catch that?
I'm, no, Chase is trying to like.
So, you know, here's, here's the arch over the stage.
He's did a really good job.
Um, he's good at it. Here's the arch, okay?
Okay.
Here's the stage.
Yeah.
We're not gonna change the arc.
Correct, yeah.
But when you go, when you go past that arch to the left, there would be your stage, or they call, there'd be more, there'd be more stage space. Into that green box.
To the, on the lead.
Mm-hmm, on the one wing.
Oh, is that, but can the audience see that?
But the audience sees probably not changing.
But they'll just bring the store seat, then move around.
The floor, cause the floor line would be the same.
Right.
Tightened, right? There.
The audience would see this, the, the performance area is not gonna change, it's just the depth of it. And the workspace to the rear and the side would be a huge improvement. So, it's not the best solution, but short of tearing the auditorium down and redoing it, I'm thinking that it might work. It's worth a discussion with this, with these guys back here. And like I said, we had a pretty. And like I said, we had a pretty interesting lively discussion the other day about what it was and they all think I'm crazy, but that's okay.
All right, so I can check here, I'm, I'm really interested in what these folks say. And uh, even slightly more than I'm interested, what you're saying. I know it's not ideal to you. But, you know, I'm thinking about, these folks are gonna have a better idea of what students are gonna be wanting to see. Over the next few years, I ask people forward and they're really doing this for students. So. I hope that is our. As we get nearer to the final recommendations, we have some clear, clear notions of what the. Um, the project group wants to, wants to accomplish overall in all three sides.
We had a feeling that might be your opinion, right? That you would, uh, and ours too, right? I mean, we of course want people in the spaces to feel good about whatever space. Or whatever recommendations we're gonna make to you. I mean, that should be the work we're doing, the ones directly serving the kids and you guys. Had a bunch of people uh, offer flattering comments about our group, but I mean, that's always what we think about our staff, they're the best, right? And so that's why we tried to make sure we did some work with the staff before we sat down with you tonight. I mean, I don't. Um, I've been trying to check in a little bit, looking over and I don't think anybody's objecting with what Dwayne is saying and that he's accurately representing some of the conversations there. And so it's a matter of trying to take, I think, the feedback that they express from concerns around lack of functionality or things that just don't provide the experience we want for our kids. And then um, putting Dwayne and, you know, what'll soon be Kurt's, you know, lens on, hey, now what can we do with that? And what can we construct and what can we do to elevate the experience? And so, um, you know, I, I think we would just ask for their feedback, you know, continually. If there's something or a direction we're heading or steering that isn't something that they think will accomplish those goals. Of course, at the end of this, the not fun part is we've gotta make sure it's been whatever money we have, right? Or put that together, so. So we totally agree, Charlie. I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to incorporate. Uh, we just don't have a big enough table to get everybody around or a way to probably have a, you know, a structured conversation. Otherwise, of course, we'd love to have them be part of that conversation too. But that's why we need to meet with them and then bring that. There you go, hey, let somebody think about that. I went to H-backs better.
Matt, I would point out one thing.
Can't be worse.
I would, can I point out one more thing? There's a garbage question, Charlie, please, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Rudy. As you, many of you know, when we do a project, we bring architects onboard and we do multiple schematic designs. And we'd move things around and pieces like that. And the team always adds input to all those schematic designs and then we'll refine the process and bring you a more designed project. So then we'll do this the same way. So no one's gonna lose the opportunity to have their voices heard with the architects and engineers. And they may come up with some better ideas and through the law.
Good. I guess I would, I don't know, maybe I'm struggling the same way everybody else is and. Sure, if you ask them, what do you think about a black box? I'm sure everybody's like, yeah, it sounds great, it's lovely, but it doesn't actually solve our problems. I think that's what I need to see. If all those things that were listed in those findings of things we needed to fix, how does a black box? Facilitate fixing any of those things? It kind of sounds like in one case, it's the temporary thing you need to do in order to fix some stuff, another way is do this up. So I need to see that in some sort of list format that's telling me, this is how we're addressing all those things, because I'm not seeing it. Well, right now, at all, then.
So maybe we'd work on that, but you, but the thing is, there're gonna be technology and lighting and acoustic sets in that one package. The black box addresses the space, you know, rehearsal rooms and, and dressing rooms and. They have small theatrical space and things like that, so they do different things. And the only reason that we got going on the black box is that it really does solve a lot of the space issues. Not so much the technology, the acoustics in the auditorium, it's not gonna fix that.
Right.
Okay, but it does give them more flexibility with their performance space, practice space, and that's what space, what the space will do. So we can, I'll weigh all that up.
We spent a lot of time on City High there, but if you look at some of those long-term recommendations, Sean, about. Uh, for Liberty High, right, provide little theater type space, right? I think that instead of the actual little theater, this was part of the genesis of the conversational. Of the black box, improve music choir rehearsal areas, you know, whether it's upgrading those or having again an additional space that they could go to access. Um, and then Wayne talked about the scene shopping backstage work. Obviously, that still happens in the auditorium portion, but. You know, I think we're happy to bring back whatever else you guys need to see about this, but I do think, you know, um, that was. Part of what we were hoping to show tonight is that how this can be part of that solution to solve some of those problems. Of course, there's some auditorium specific. Work that needs to be done. And as we spent time on City High, it's maybe easier to see some of that synergy, but there's also other needs at West and, and um. At Liberty that we feel like those simultaneously address, right? If it's not specific to the auditorium work.
I, I really like the, the creativity that went into this, how this can be a multi-use space that, like for example, at West. Could that somehow be designed in a way that that can be overflowed space for the lobby before productions in? Um, in the main theater and then at Liberty, one of the um. Things that they identified as a need was space for showfire. Would the, the black, black box theater be large enough for, for that space?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I guess I'll continue on the city because I, I've been in there where the, when the risers are set up.
We're talking three, four thousand square feet, which is. There are room, or not there, the band room at City High combined is four thousand. Pretty big space.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it would.
Just one other question. With respect to Liberty. If, for example, we didn't want to touch the art room. And we wanted to do a little theater style, could the little theater go in the red spot? Where the new art rooms.
Sure.
I mean, I just think of the other little theaters at City and West, those are centrally located. I, I'm just, just wondering if.
There's two, to the left of that red box, there's two spaces that were originally designated as student club space. Okay, so if that were to be repurposed, it'd have to be repurposed through that or create an adequate corridor into that little theater. But yeah, there's ways to do it. Right? There's a lot of possibilities, except the perimeter of the site really is bad at Liberty, it just. It could even be, you know where the parking lot is now, the staff lot out there where the buses park, there's a bus lot, a staff lot in the building. There's another possible spot. So there's places to do it, but it'd be further away. From current production, from current drama, current music, current.
Well.
As long as we don't have to put an extra pylons.
Not a lit, we did at Liberty have to do some deeper footings, but not as bad as City High or some of the other ones, southeast.
I mean, for me, this all found exciting, especially if it's uh, addressing like the immediate needs. For the books that's using this space um, right away. But I'm sort of like, Sean, I would love to see it laid out more and with a solid timeline. Because um, it's important that we can get this work done because. At a lot of our schools, they're just continually to grow in the music program and those programs, so.
So by laid out, you mean the actual floor plans or the, or the timeline?
Timeline, timeline, no, not.
Thank you.
But.
Timeline, budget, cost.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so a couple of things, I guess, you know, kind of thinking about what's in front of us, guys, um, maybe some next steps, so. You're, I think we need to get some commitment on our overall FMP two point two, right? What those budget categories are gonna look like there, so we can move these projects to a step where Dwayne can give you reasonable numbers. Cause the other thing we don't wanna do, um, we can create a budget line item in there, but also trying to really get you specific data on how much these black box are gonna cost. You know, without engaging in some of that long-term work will be difficult, right? So I think. In May, as we're talking about bringing back that whole facility master plan, we need to get some commitment on. You know, athletic budget line items for the, the field houses and kind of the outdoor spaces we talked about. We need to get a budget line item for fine arts improvements, kind of the short-term, long-term piece here. And then we can, then we can keep coming back about details about what these projects look like. And like Dwayne said, we have a good path to move forward on those. I think what we're hearing here a little bit is some of those immediate needs, how can those get accounted for and what's a timeline we can put on those? But until we're sure that you guys are good with kind of what we're thinking for a dollar amount, li- living in that second FMP to do those things. It, it's even harder to build those timelines out, because it's not like we just do a fine arts project, right? I mean, we have how many projects in motion this year across the district? So the timeline to do those is contingent on other projects we also have going on and managing at the same time. And so if you're okay with that, I think that's the big picture concept we bring back still in May. Um, and then we'll, I'll talk to Dwayne about what kind of specifics we could give you underneath there that inform those dollar amounts around West. Uh, City and Liberty for that FMP, just like we did in the athletics and had kind of the three campuses broke down. Um, so I'd like to proceed with that in May and then maybe just a positive comment to end the night on is like, there's a lot of districts in the news right now talking about a lot of really difficult things. And the fact we're talking about some really cool investments for athletics and fine arts. I think, you know, we need to take a moment and just. Be really grateful for that too and, and thank our great people back here that keep our kids in our programs and keep them engaged, that keep our enrollment driving up. So that these are the conversations we're having, right? Because we're gonna disagree at some point on some piece of this, but that's a heck of a disagreement to have. Rather than what you can see down the road happening right now, right? And we're not immune to some of those things that are going on in those places, but I think it's always easy just to. Take the, the moments that feel good and move them on so quick and we turn the page to what the next problem is, rather than focus on, hey, let's kind of celebrate the conversation. We're getting to have here for our kids, which is really cool. So I appreciate your time tonight. I know it was really long.
That sound like he tried that. I will, um, entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, uh, leave the adjourn, get home safe.